I'd like to order the June 6, 2017, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Invite you to stand if you... Tonight we have with us Chaplain from the Medical Center and Police Department, Joe Causi, providing the application for us. Chaplain?
Join me as we pray together. Good Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for this commission. We pray, Lord, that like Solomon, you would grant them wisdom to do that which is best in leading our city to grow and to do the things that we need to do. We pray, Father, for the business that will be conducted tonight, that it will be the business that will support our community, that will help our city, and will be right in your eyes. And, Father, we pray for the citizens of Bowling Green, that you would grant us love, grace toward one another, and you would help us to be tolerant of one another. But, Lord, most of all, we want to do that which is right in your eyes. And, Father, we pray for our world, that in the midst of a violent world and terrorist activity, that you would keep us safe, keep us safe in our city, in our county, in our state, in our nation, and around the world. And, Father, we pray for our men and women overseas, those in the service, please keep them safe as they try to protect us. We pray that you would protect them. And, Father, we pray for peace and love and grace amongst all people. And, most of all, we want to do that which is right in your eyes, not that which is popular, not that which, Lord, seems to be fun, but that which is right in your eyes. And, Lord, we pray for forgiveness. We ask you to forgive us when we do the wrong thing for the wrong reason. And, Lord, help us to do the right thing for the right reason. Give us a good opportunity tonight. Help us, Lord, bless us, guide us, keep us safe, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Under awards and recognitions.
Just so proud to have Keenan here as part of our community. Keenan has been recognized by two major awards last year, the Jefferson Award for 2016, and then a particularly great award on behalf of Mother Teresa, National Caring Award. The likes of Muhammad Ali and many others have been given this award. And Keenan is 19 years old, from Bowling Green, Kentucky, and has written a book. So I'll let Keenan go from there.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. And thank you, Commissioner Sue Perigien, for the warm welcome. I have written my very first book, Voices of Bowling Green, and I self-published it on January 1, 2017 of this year. And I couldn't be more grateful and thankful of all my hard work, you know, the amount of time I invested into it, and just to put a great name on it for our city and carry it throughout the world. It became an Amazon Top 100 Bestseller first two weeks and sold in over seven different countries, hundreds of cities across the globe. And I'm just so thankful just to be able to represent our city throughout it and inspire kids. But mainly, I would like to just inspire young people all around the world that anything is possible and that to give hope to our kids here, that as long as you dream it, you can do it, you know? And it's all about putting in the work time and time again, and that anything is possible. And I couldn't do it without the support from the citizens here of our city and our county for always holding me, you know, and always pushing me, encouraging me to do the best that I can. And I could hopefully, I hope to continue all my efforts, not only in this city, but to everybody across the world. And I'd like to thank you all so much. And tonight, I would like to present the very first book that was printed. When they came in, I automatically took the very first one and I signed it off to the city. I just never got a chance to come here and officially give it, present it to you all. But I brought two of them, just in case the other one gets stolen, someone breaks in here.[295.52][295.52](Laughter). But they are signed by me, and I would like to present it to you all.
Great, thank you.
Backup.
The backup. We'll put the backup in the safe, but we'll have these in City Hall downstairs for somebody who wants to peruse that as they're coming and looking, finding about our community. Thank you, Keenan, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Keenan. Appreciate it. Good job.
All right, next up is Operation Pride, and I saw, there she is, Ms. Angie Alexiev. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Angie Alexiev. I'm with Operation Pride, and we have been partnering with the city since 1993, when we were founded. And it's an excellent example of a public-private partnership, and we have enjoyed that time. And one of the things that we get to do as a beautification organization in Bowling Green, Warren County, is we like to recognize homeowners and business owners who make improvements to their property. Because our community is gorgeous, but it takes every single individual who owns a business and a home to make that happen. We can take care of public areas as much as possible, but, you know, it's the individual citizens of our community who actually impact ultimately how our community looks and our personality. So I am thrilled to announce that our May Residential Pride Award winner is Mandy Garvin, and she lives at 625 Nutwood Street. And would you come join me, Mandy?
Hi.[411.31][411.31](Laughter).
I didn't see you back there. I saw your Facebook pictures.
Hello, hello. Thanks for having me. I feel like I won a Grammy, like a Bowling Green girl.[425.13][425.13](Laughter).
Back in the mic. Mandy has done a tremendous job on making renovations to this home at 625 Nutwood Street. And, oh, I always forget how to do this. There we go. This is the front facade of the home before. And that's the after. One of my favorite parts of this is the hatch, because don't you just want to go sit on that porch? And this looks really pretty good the way it is, but look at it now. So congratulations, Mandy.
Thank you.
For winning the prestigious Operation Pride Residential Pride Award for May of 2017.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything? Would you like to add something?
Um, I had a whole lot of help, for sure.[488.12][488.12](Laughter). It's just the biggest undertaking I've ever done on a personal level, so it was exciting. I did it without a contractor. I just had a whole lot of good friends that happened to be good at a lot of stuff and somehow teamwork, so, yeah.
These photos courtesy of Mandy Garvin Photography.
They are. They are. And it's a pretty good back party deck now, so.
I understand.
There you go.
Well, congratulations. Thank you so much.[512.52][512.52](Applause). All right, is there any other awards or recognitions? All right, Mr. DeFebbe, we have some comments tonight.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. There'll be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to Kara, 6218101C, for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
Second.
And Nash, second. By Williams, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second item, as the Commission knows, and hopefully as citizens do also, one of our top priorities in our community is provide new sidewalks in our city so that we can be a community that allows the citizens to move from neighborhood to neighborhood. This priority was established about around 2008, and we consistently have done it every year. To date, we have been able to install 14 miles of new sidewalk in our community that heretofore didn't exist. We're here tonight to ask you to listen to the priorities we have for this year. If approved by you, this will result in about 4,300 linear feet of new sidewalk. Pursuant to your request, we hold a series of meetings with neighborhoods, and we get their input about putting additional sidewalks in their neighborhood. From that process and our own internal prioritization, we come up with the list. This year, the list will be serving five different neighborhoods. Presenting the list will be Kyle Hunt, and I think aided by Karen Foley. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Mr. DeFebbe said, we are here this afternoon to present candidate projects for the FY18 Sidewalk Construction Program. Before I get started, I would like to thank Kyle Bearden, our GIS Manager. He's the one that put this presentation together. This year, we went with an online web, it's a web-based mapping program that we're using to give this presentation, so I'd like to acknowledge his work on this. So he was the one that put in the hard work. So before I talk about the individual projects, I'd like to give just a brief state of the sidewalk program itself. As Mr. DeFebbe stated, as of fiscal year 17 that we're currently in, we have constructed 14, just over 14 miles of new sidewalk throughout the city. On this map, you can see the dark gray lines are the existing sidewalk network before 2008, before the start of the program. And nine years later, the pink segments are the sections that we have built as part of the program. So you can see that we think the program has done a good job of selecting locations all throughout the city and not just focusing on specific locations or just a few locations So for 2018, we are recommending four locations. Those are Park Street, Kenton Street, Magnolia, and North Lee. Briefly talk about Park Street first. This location goes from Cabell Drive to Logan Way. As we go from Cabell to Ogden Way, we are on the right side of the street. And once we cross Ogden, we go over to the left side of the street in front of Ogden Park, and we will connect to the upcoming project on Logan Way. So once this project is complete, the Ogden Park will be completely accessible by sidewalk. Yes, sir?
Can you go back to, so the sidewalk stays is on the park side of the road and then continues on the park side of the road for another block?
No. If you turn off of Cabell onto Park, it will be on the right side of the street. And then as you cross the intersection at Ogden Way, it switches sides to the left side as you're heading toward Logan, due to the park being on that side of the street. On the other side of the street were various drainage and utility concerns, which helped us make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
The next section is Kenton Street, and it is between Collet Avenue and East 10th Avenue. This was a recent request that came through the program, and it rose to the top basically due to the relatively short segment length and then also the close proximity to the International Center at the corner of Kenton and Collet. Our next location is Magnolia Street, and it will be constructed between Lehman Avenue and East 10th Avenue. Originally, we had proposed construction all the way over to Green Lawn Avenue. However, during the public meetings, as well as the comment cards that we received via mail, there were several opposed to this section. I believe it's the 500, 600, and 700 blocks of Magnolia. So we have decided to remove that from the program. And Karen Foley is here tonight from NCS to go over some of the responses that we received for these projects as well. So rather than doing this location from Green Lawn to Lehman, we have elected to move to North Lee Street. And we will, we propose to construct sidewalk on the east side of the street from Curbside Ministry to Trent Way. And this will tie to a project that NCS is proposing for the Neighborhood Improvement Program on the west side of the street from Glen Lally Road up to Leepoint Apartments. And we will, like I said, we will build on the Curbside Ministry side and go all the way up to North Lee with the intent of a future project connecting, or Trent Way, with a future project potentially connecting from Trent Way to Old Berden River Road. And in addition to both sidewalk projects at this location, we are working on an improved crosswalk that includes pavement markings as well as two solar-powered, rapid flashing beacons for those that attend, that come to and from Curbside Ministry.
The section on Magnolia that is not going to be constructed is where? I know it's in the 500 block, but...
The 500, 600, and 700 block, yes, sir.
So that would be behind Eastwood Baptist Church?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, we are proposing these locations. This is just our suggestions for you to tell us whether or not to move forward. So if you did want to see one or more of these blocks constructed, that is definitely your decision, and we will follow through with that.
Well, I think it's important that we, and we have for years, have the neighbors involved and a presentation made at a location within that neighborhood.
Correct.
I had some calls and concerns pertaining to the Magnolia section up behind Eastwood. So they spoke and they were heard.
And we have listened. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
One other. Given the amount that we didn't, that we're not proposing to do on Magnolia, and the fact that we've shifted it over to the Curbside Ministries property, there appears to be quite a bit of difference between what we took away from Magnolia and what we moved over.
There is.
Is there any chance of, since we are already building on Kenton Street from the International Center, is there any chance of, nope, I withdraw the question. There's already a sidewalk on the other side of the street that I couldn't see.
That goes along 10th?
Yeah, I was thinking of connecting 10th.
Right.
But there's already a sidewalk on the other side of the street.
Yeah, the one section was built, and I apologize, the black sections, the dark black sections, those are sections of sidewalk that have been built as part of the program, and the lighter gray sections were built prior to 2008.
Other comments or questions? Do you have anything further, Mr. DeFebbe?
Karen is here, if you'd like to discuss any of the responses from the neighborhood.
I'm fine.
One question I've got, is there a way on our website that we can direct citizens to go to and find out the status of individual projects?
There is.
Not necessarily that they're going to be built, but where are we in the cycle right now?
Right. If you go to the city's main website, under the featured links, there is a link for the sidewalk program. And once you click on that, it gives a list of current projects, whether they're in design or construction or recently completed. And it also gives a complete list of locations in the program that have been requested and what their ranks are.
And link to request new projects.
And, yes, and it also has a link to request new projects as well.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Commissioner Hunt, appreciate your work. Thank you. DeFebbe, do you have anything else?
Oh, I don't, Mayor, thank you.
All right. First item then is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on May 16, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigien, second by Williams. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance, excuse me, second reading of ordinance BG 2017-21.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of an unimproved right-of-way on an unnamed alley located at the rear of 1532 Chestnut Street.
Second. Dunning, second by Nash, is second reading of the item we considered last time. Is there any other comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-22.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 23 Water and Sewer, Subchapter 23-3 Sewer System of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances as proposed by Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Perigien. Again, second reading. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-80.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Jennifer O. Edwards to the position of Records Management Coordinator in the Office of City Manager.
So moved. Motion by Nash, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. As a public corporation, we have a responsibility and a legal obligation to maintain the records of the city for various periods of time, sometimes forever. And we have managed that obligation over the years in a way that isn't representative of the importance of the mission. So a number of years ago, we decided to create a records retention function. We probably made that decision about 2008 and just waited for the right time to finance it and fund it. As the Commission knows, we have the health clinic, and we have a space next to that that used to have NCS. That will become our new records retention facility. And it's in various stages of completion, and we need someone to manage that. So we went out to solicitation, and we're proud here today to put a name before you. And Kate will do that honor. Kate?
Jennifer Edwards has been with the city since 2004, when she began working in the police department as our dispatcher. She was promoted to dispatch supervisor in June of 2008. In April of 2011, Jennifer transferred to our police records division, and by October of 2015 was promoted to the supervisor of the records division. Jennifer has a bachelor's degree from WKU and is a graduate of our 2016 Internal Leadership Development Program Team Bowling Green. Jennifer was also named, when she was in the police department, still currently in the police department, as the Department's Civilian of the Year for years 2007, 2011, and 2015. Due to her experience and with the management of police records and her knowledge and understanding of the inner workings of the city, as well as open records and records retention requirements, Jennifer has the ability to seamlessly transfer to help build and implement a cohesive records management program for the whole organization. Therefore, Jennifer Edwards is being recommended for promotion to Records Management Coordinator. Jennifer is here this afternoon, if she'll stand up. She's with her husband, Matt Edwards, her daughter, Cadence, and her mother, Dedra Green.[1375.57][1375.57](Applause). As much as we're sad to remove her from the police department, I am excited to have her join the city manager's office and be a part of our organization over there.
Not as excited as Joe is to take over the floor here. Joe, go ahead.[1395.51][1395.51](Laughter).
I think it is my duty.[1398.63][1398.63](Laughter). And I always ask my friend, the chief of police for the city of Bowling Green, about his new employees. I have some concerns, Chief. Did we check her husband out?[1415.33][1415.33](Laughter).
We have relied on her judgment as to the quality of person he is, and so we're relying on her.[1427.28][1427.28](Laughter).
Ooh. I'm glad we're relying on somebody, and I'll take her word first.
If you had to rely on one of them, she's the one.[1436.45][1436.45](Laughter).
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief.
She'll do a good job for Katie. She'll do a good job for the city. We're sorry to lose her.
Where is she going to be housed?
She's going to actually be housed in the records retention facility in the annex.
In the annex?
Yeah, next to the clinic. It's where the old NCS area was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We don't have to put up with him, then, is that right?
Right.[1458.51][1458.51](Laughter).
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Any other comments or questions? I think we're very pleased for you, Jennifer. Thank you so much for the work that you've done. Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-81.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Alan Reed to the Warren County Board of Assessment Appeals, also known as the Local Board of Property Tax Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigien, second by Williams. The next series are appointments to boards and commissions. Most are reappointments, a couple are new ones. We appreciate those who have served previously and have chosen to end their service by saying that they've had enough mainly. But we're excited to bring on some new talent as well. So any other comments or questions for Mr. Reed? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-82.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Dr. John Fitz to the City/County Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Nash, second. Perigien, and any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-83.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Dr. Randy Dear to the City of Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigien. Are there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-84.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Zoe Price to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
By Perigien, second by Williams. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-85.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Susie Oldham to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second.
By Nash, second by Dunning. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And Municipal Order 2017-86.
Municipal Order approving the reappointment of Donna Harmon to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Perigien. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigien?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Many of these are expiring June 30 as well. We have so many of them at once, so. We'll continue on with Municipal Order 2017-87.
Municipal Order authorizing continuation of coverage by HM Life Insurance Company relating to managed healthcare and stop loss, and specific stop-loss excess insurance for fiscal year 2018.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Perigien, second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
Thank you, Mayor. With your courtesy and that of the Commission, we'd like to group items 10, 11, 12, and items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen because they're all in the same family of action. As the commission knows, we're self-insured and, and we believe we provide a good product of value for the taxpayers as well as a quality product for our employees. These four elements are needed to provide that product and I would like Mike Grubbs to handle these and answer any questions you may have. Michael?
Thank you. The first item on the agenda has to do with our insurance that we purchase to cover high claims. The city's been self-funded since 1992 and we pay the initial, some level of claims and then we have insurance coverage above that. Over time, that figure has risen to its currently $125,000. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of high claimants due to expensive medication that's life-saving, that have really thrown our insurance into a, a problem area. But each year, our consultants, Cheryl Morgan, go out to get bids for us, do evaluation, they negotiate with the companies, try to get us the best product we can, comparing the premiums as well as what, what can we accept as far as the specific deductible. This past year was the first time we had to accept what they call a laser, where we'd accept a higher deductible on a couple of individuals. We had resisted that in the past simply because, once you have it, you keep it. But in order to keep our premium relatively low, we accepted that. This year Cheryl Morgan went out to get quotes. They contacted over ten companies. We got four solid proposals. The current company, HM Life, was the one that presented the best option for us. And then Cheryl Morgan went through and said, okay, what if we accept a higher deductible? What if it's 150,000, 200,000, 250,000? And then came back with recommendations. What we're recommending to you all is that we accept the $250,000 deductible. We'll no longer have the two patients, the two clients, that are lasered. But it also provides us with a lower insurance premium. And part of the reason to do that is each year, the insurance company can raise their premium 50%. So, by accepting a lower premium, that means next year's premium won't go up as bad as if we accepted a high premium. So, if you compare the premium plus the extra cost we would have had for the lasering, it's actually less expensive for us to go with this higher deductible next year, which will save our plan money. They figured we'd have to have four more people hit the higher stop loss for us to cost more than had we kept our typical plan. So, the recommendation is to stay with HM and to go with the $250,000 stop loss premium, which will actually be $200,000 in what we're paying this year. But again, we're taking on more risk with the claims. So, be glad to ask her any questions.
Questions on? I'm gonna go ahead and vote on this particular one then. All right, please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-88.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with Care Here P L L C for administering employee onsite medical clinic services for fiscal year 2018.
Moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Nash.
We actually started looking at the possibility of offering an employee health clinic probably four years ago. Again, the consultant Cheryl Morgan were the ones that shared it with us. The city manager had seen examples of this elsewhere. We spent our time studying it, went and visited a couple of clinics that are operated by local governments up in northern Kentucky. We went out to bid in 2015. Cheryl Morgan helped us evaluate those. We accepted the proposal from Care Here, then worked with them through 2016, 2015, to get the clinic open in January of 16. We're now finishing our first full fiscal year with Care Here. We feel like it's been successful. We actually had to increase the doctor hours this past January by about 25% due to demand. We started moving occupational health services over there last August. As an example, we have to do firefighter physicals every year on all 200, 123 firefighters. We moved those to the clinic and we're now doing them monthly. We also do our pre-employment physicals there. So, it's helping save the city money with our occupational health. Cheryl Morgan did analysis after a year and feels like we've had modest savings. But obviously, the more utilization, and particularly if they can catch high-risk diseases like, okay, let's control Max's cholesterol so that he doesn't get heart disease and costs the city a lot of money down the road. That's, that's the, the course that we're taking. So, we're recommending continuing the agreement for another year. And Care Here is keeping the same rate for their administrative costs, no increase in their administrative fee. So, again, glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions?
Sorry to hear about your cholesterol.
Well, they went ahead and put me on the medicine, hippa, 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 to keep it from going higher. So, they're, they're working on it before it gets bad.
I'm gonna comment on, on how convenient that is. I, I went a couple of weeks ago for a sinus infection and man, was it great. It really was. It was in and out and easy and friendly and nice and.
And free. We do have doc, a doctor or nurse that both are very happy and employees seem to be happy with them too, so.
Comments?
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-89.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with Maritane Health Incorporated relating to employee health and third-party administrator services for fiscal year 2018.
Moved.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams. Ms., uh.
As I mentioned, we've been self-funded for a long time. We went out for bid in 2015 again with Cheryl Morgan's help for the claims administrator for our health plan. They also do large case management and other services. And as a result of that RFP process, we selected Maritane Health. We've now finishing our second fiscal year with them. Again, they're not recommending, it's a three-year contract and they proposed no increase in their administrative fee. This time last year, we reported that we had had some employee complaints about service. Part of that went back to the fact that we changed claims administrators in the middle of a plan year, which we don't want to do again, but we did. But the last year, we've been very successful. We have weekly phone meetings with them to talk about any issues. And again, recommending continuing with Maritane for another year.
Questions? Call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-90.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of an agreement with Cheryl D. Morgan and Associates for healthcare consultant services for fiscal year 2018.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams. Mr. Grubbs?
We went out for bid for our consultant services for medical insurance and our medical plan back in 2013. After that review, we decided to stay with Cheryl Morgan. They had a set fee for five years and this would be the fifth. If we do it one more year, that'll be the fifth year. As I've already mentioned, they've helped us with bidding out the TPA services. They helped us with the health clinic. They helped to monitor our claims. They, they get the quotes for the stop loss insurance and they don't charge any kind of a broker fee. That's all included with the consultant services. So, we're recommending staying with them one more year.
Comments or questions?
I'd like to, to thank Mike and all the staff that, that worked so hard to do all the background information on this, the digging, and to make sure that you're doing what you can to take care of the employees. Looks like to me that y'all have done a yeoman's job. So, appreciate that.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-91.
Municipal order authorizing continuation of an agreement with resource management associates through non-competitive negotiations for promotional testing services for the fire depart, fire and police departments for fiscal year 2018 in the amount of $55,000.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. At one time, our management consultant for promotions was bifurcated with the police going with one company and the fire department going with another. I think this is the second year in which we've combined our services and gone with resource management associates. We're here today to ask you to, again, finance at 55,000 their services for promotion for police and fire. Doug, as well as Jason are here if you'd like to vet their opinions.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-92.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-55 for fire uniforms from Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky, and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky, based on unit prices.
Moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Nash. Fibo.
The commission is reminded, we provide different types of uniforms for our firemen. We go out to bid every year for that. We're here today to ask you to approve the award of bid to two different concerns. One, Galls of Lexington for most of the wear and Nats from Bowling Green for other parts of, of what the firemen need to do their job. Again, Jason is here and we went with a low bidder and broke it into two parts.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-93.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-59 for transit services and approving a contract with Community Action of Southern Kentucky Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Moved.
Perrigen, second by Nash. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. We provide services to some of our citizens in this community through what is known as the 5307 program. And this allows us to access federal money to provide bus services. There's a local contribution as well as a state contribute. Most of it is heavily leveraged by the federal government. We need an agent to run that service. We're here tonight to ask you to approve a bid with Community Acts for continuation of providing services. Nick Cook is here as well as principals from Community Action if you have any question about this contract.
Questions?
To your bid, Greg?
Nick?
Three?
All righty then.
And is contingent upon the amount of funding that we receive.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning? Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-94.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-46 for West 14th Avenue and Woodford Avenue drainage improvements from Scott &amp; Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $128,397.41.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second, I'm sorry, Nash, second by Denning. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three significant priorities in our community for the use of public money. First is paving. It's probably the most popular, followed by sidewalks, which we did earlier, followed by stormwater. On tonight's agenda, we have two stormwater projects. The first is to award a contract to Scott &amp; Murphy for the installation of needed stormwater improvements along 14th Avenue and Woodford Avenue. Greg Meredith is here if you'd like to go into the details of the project.
Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-95.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a contract with J. and F. Janitorial Services Incorporated of Somerset, Kentucky for janitorial services in the amount of $224,580.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third year of a, a contract the city has with J. F. Janitorial Services in, in our city. We're here to amend that and add additional items to that, primarily the, the city care center, some changes here in the city hall, as well as the addition of the administrative wing of, of the fire department. Again, Greg is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-96.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-50 for Reservoir Hill retaining wall rehabilitation from David Construction Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky in the amount of $187,700.
Moved.
Second.
By Nash, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the first year of our neighborhood improvement program, one of our flagship projects was the replacement of the retaining wall up at Reservoir Hill. Anybody who drives it will notice that the wall was becoming unkeyed from its, it was the facade wall coming unkeyed from its masonry backing. So, Brent is asking for you to a bid, award a bid for $187,700 to David Construction to build a much-needed wall up at Reservoir Hill to capstone what we've done under neighborhood improvement program for the first year. Brent is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-97.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-62 for Loop Street Drainage Improvements from TPM Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $231,954.54.
Moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Williams. Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second stormwater project that we have on the agenda tonight. We're asking you to, to award approximately $232,000 to TPM to help us install 1,100 meter feet of stormwater improvement. Greg Meredith is here if you have any questions about the project.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-98.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2017-58 for Preston Miller Soccer Area Improvements and Russell Sims Aquatic Entry Buildings from Scott, Murphy, and Daniel LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $739,567.
Moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Nash. Mr. Fibo.
Not every day do we spend $740,000. I thought it was important for Brent, Elcher, Belcher, yeah, little Brent, to come up and to take you around this project. It involves two locations, two bidders, and involves the building of new buildings at the water park as well as the soccer complex. Brent, you want to take him around the field, please?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to, to talk about a, another park improvement. So, we're here today, this is negotiation of sealed bids, so they were, Scott, Murphy, and Daniel was the only bidder we had, only responsive bidder we had on the project. Winner negotiations and obviously have a proposal for you now to consider for a, a final total. The projects we're talking about would be the first project that's at the same location. It's the Preston Miller Park, but Russell Sims Aquatic Center, that's inside of Preston Miller Park. And then the, we, we will be looking for a, a construction begin on a new four-field soccer complex at that park and it's a building in conjunction with that. Let me begin with the water park. This is the peak season for the water park. We started right at Memorial Day and we have large crowds every day on Tomlinson Way if you're, if you're listening. If you haven't checked us out, please do so. But one of the things that, it opened in, in the year 2000 and one of the things that's become apparent over this, this 18th summer, is the admission building is just not conducive to an effective operation of getting the public in and out as quickly and efficiently as possible. And this building would address that, if you will. It will create a new separate location. If you've ever familiar, been to the, the water park, you'll notice there's a shelter in the front, as you're looking at the, at the, the front of the water park to the right. This would basically be on that same footprint. It'd be a new structure there. So, a new entry point. It would have as many as six lanes to bring the public in, therefore six lanes to get out. We think that will ease congestion, allow people to get in quicker, to more efficiently and effectively, and offer a little more safety, if you will, of our staff. The mode I can describe is you have a, a center building that is majority of it's glass, of two lanes of traffic on each side, and then almost like two toll booths on the outside of those to allow two more tra, lanes of traffic. That would be as well. We feel like that would give kind of decentralized, if you will, the main building that is currently exists at the water park. And then we'll be looking at a, a proposal here coming up in the next few bullet points in the budget that we can actually reconstruct some additional bathroom facilities and take the, the current admission building into more bathrooms. But that's another project for another, another point for you to consider. But that would address the new admission building for the water park. The second part is same park, different project. The soccer complex at Preston Miller. It is a, really, it's a restroom for the ladies and men's, it's a small storage closet, and the most important function for, that leads us to the soccer complex is electrical storage, it's an electrical room. So we need that to be built prior to lights, irrigation, and such that's going to be needed for the soccer complex. So it's important for us to get that step going prior to the fieldwork on the soccer fields. Our intent, and we feel like we received this, by having one contractor at the same location is to ultimately save money because we didn't want to have two separate bids and two different contractors coming out working at nearly the same time. So our intent was to have one contractor, one location, they can mobilize hopefully easier and for our timelines associated. So both of those are the projects in this one bid. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions?
When are they going to start? Is it going to be after this season?
Admission building, the construction will start just prior to the end of the building, but it will not be ready by the end of this season. If you've noticed, the shelter itself, it will actually have to be demoed soon after we get, the contract is signed for this.
This won't interfere with the families that plan to go swimming this season?
Will have no effect on our daily operations currently. It won't have anything to do with the existing buildings that we have at the water park. It's a separate, while located nearby, it's not inside the current water park.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand seventeen twenty-three.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing four point six four three one acres from H. B. Highway Business to R. M. Four multifamily residential located at twenty-three fifty-three and twenty-three sixty-one, Brusselsville Road, presently owned by William Family Limited Partnership Two with John Groves and Shane Van Meter as contract bender.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash. This is first reading of a rezoning ordinance that was heard before the Planning Commission with the unanimous recommendation for approval. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand seventeen ninety-nine.
Municipal order accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated Fiscal Year two thousand eighteen operating budget and financial statements ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Denning. Mr. Fibo?
Thank you, Mayor. We made the decision to lead in the sponsorship of a general obligation bond for the trans park. One of the conditions was that the I. T. A. provide its annual operating budget to this body. Meredith Robinson is here to do that tonight. Meredith? Sorry. All righty then.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, distinguished staff. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and present our annual trans park update. We've had another exciting year at the trans park, and if you'll indulge me, I will, I promise to be brief. I know you have a long agenda and a long night ahead of you, but I do want to show you some things that have changed since the last time I was before you. So this is the new and improved marketing map for the trans park. You will notice up at the very top of the screen, there is the entrance off of thirty-one W. onto Commonwealth, and the large lot, Lot Number Three, on the right-hand side of the screen, if you're looking this way, is now gray. That was sold this past year. You'll see that it reflected in our financials. So North Point Development has purchased that and is in the process of building a three hundred thousand square foot facility that will be light assembly and warehousing. The tenant will be announced soon. But if you drive out there today, today is the first day that we can see it coming out of the ground, so it's very exciting. We had pictures come back from staff today. You'll notice the rest of the gray, we are running out of green tracts that are available, so we are starting the planning process for where the next industrial park will go. This is the annual wage assessment income, so it goes back to two thousand and ten, and you can see where we're trending. We will finish the year up over two million dollars. This will be a record year for us and projecting to be over that for next year as well. Here's the detail of the revenue. Again, sort of major fluctuations, wage assessment income. We are currently, as of April fifteenth, and quarterly, we check in with all of the tenants in the park to get their employment numbers. As of April fourteenth, we are at twenty-six hundred and seventy-four employees in the park, so there are new jobs that didn't exist prior to the park being built. And then also going down, if you see the line that says land sale income, when we budget, we don't budget for land sales. Obviously, that's dependent on the market, but for the current year that we're in right now, you'll see one point four million, the majority of that related to the Lot Three land sale to North Point. And then we had some additional, there was a rental house that the I. T. A. had that was sort of off the map that we sold as excess, and then we sold some dirt to help with the I. Sixty-five connector road as it was being built. And then the other item I would call your attention to is lease revenue. And so while the city and the county make the bond payments for the I. T. A. on the park itself, we record that activity for the I. T. A., and so that one point six five is the expected bond payment per the schedule. That being said, that land sale income, one point three of that one point four is, per our inter-local agreement, comes back to the city. Jeff has used that to pay down on the bond, so I'm awaiting a new schedule. We expect that number to come down in the upcoming year because we have made a payment already on principle. And this is our operating expense trend. The blue line is our actual, I'll just remind you that we took over, previously, the city had been responsible for maintaining the right-of-ways and the medians within the park. Last year, we took that over, so that's why you see that increase going up above, you know, the sort of four hundred and fifty thousand, it's related to maintenance on the park. And this is the detail of the expenditures related to the park. And just a couple items to note here. One on the management fee, the increase from last year to this year to the proposed budget is three percent, which is per our management agreement with the city and the county. Professional fees relates to our estimate of legal fees for any land sales deals that we will have for the upcoming year. And again, the only other significant number is that sixty thousand dollars, and that's related to the maintenance of the right-of-ways, and then also the bush hogging contract that we have for when we have visitors coming to look at particular parcels, we have them bush hogged so we can actually show them well. And then this is for calendar year two thousand sixteen. This is where we sort of overall ended up for economic development as a whole. Total attraction projects was sixty-seven point seven million dollars, expansion projects three hundred and ninety-two point six million dollars, for a total of four hundred and sixty million dollars, six hundred and fifty-three new jobs in Bowling Green and Warren County for two thousand sixteen. And then so far for calendar year two thousand seventeen, we are at a total of eighty-six point seven million dollars and two hundred and eighty-three jobs with three more announcements coming by the end of this month. So stay tuned. With that, I will pause, and if you have any questions, we're happy to take them.
Any questions from Meredith Robinson?
Like to add a point if I could?
Yes, sir.
I am on the I. T. A. Board, and as a member have voted to approve this budget. Jeff Mizel is also on the Finance Committee, and he did also, so you should, full disclosure should be provided.
Anything else for us?
Thank you very much. We couldn't do this without you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand seventeen twenty-four.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget, ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen, and ending June thirty, two thousand eighteen by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash. We had a long discussion and presentation last week, but I think there may be some other comments. Did you have, Mr. Fibo?
I was gonna, we're talking about the budget. I think it's good news for the citizens. Again, we don't, we're not raising taxes, we're not growing government, we're providing what we feel to be, the services the city are asking for us, and we do that in a cost-effective way, and trying to stay within that balance of what the citizens are willing to pay and what we need. So we're positive about it.
Comments?
How many years without raising taxes?
Fourteen or something.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Probably unheard of.
Questions? I'm sure you got to see it in the replay, but didn't want to leave you out of that discussion.
Did you have a question about the budget?
Yeah. Okay. Do you remember when you, do you remember the budget when they said that you have four million dollars left? You know, and what I'm thinking is, do you remember the small business idea that I had? You know, helping small businesses grow? Well, you could use ten thousand of that money, okay, and give it to the small business development, and let small business development give it to small businesses and let them grow. You could do that. You know? That's another thing, you could do that. You could do, you can help somebody have the American dream. You can help somebody establish their own business, you know, and this is what this country was built on. So also, do not take the funding away from small business development. Now, you know why? Because if you do, it's going to, it's going to say to the community that you're not for small business. And that's a bad idea because all the businesses owners would actually be for making their business grow and stuff like that. So it's a bad idea to do that. So, and another thing, Paducah and the other towns in this area protect their small businesses. Paducah has a special funding just to help our small businesses grow. That's what we should have here. So just think about it. You have four million dollars left. That's why I listened to the whole boring thing. I was like, it was boring. But four million dollars, you can take ten thousand dollars and give to the small business development. That's all I want to say.
Anybody else? All right. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand seventeen twenty-five.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules, ordinance amending the classification pay schedules G. for general classified, S. for protective sworn, D. for department head management, and U. for unclassified part-time employees, and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
By Perrigen, second by Nash. Mr. Fibo?
Thank you, Mayor. In this year's budget and budgets, in year past, we use a classification system to make changes to the pay of employees. As Kate mentioned, we have G. for general employees, S. for protective and sworn, D. for department heads, and U. for unclassified. This also applies to part-time employees. Michael is here to answer any question you may have. You can see in the packet, as well as the budget packet, there was a memo, and he's here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments for Mr. Fibo? Please call the roll.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand seventeen one hundred.
Municipal order approving exchange agreement between City of Bowling Green and Top Best Ever LLC related to exchange of parking lots.
So moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Williams. Let me take this.
You're the sponsor, Mayor.
I sponsored this municipal order for exchange of our parking lot with one owned by Top Best Ever LLC. Parking, a portion of the parking lot behind the square, behind the Pushen Buildings, in between the Greenways and College Street and the alley and Eighth Street is currently being leased by this company and has essentially a long-term lease, and has made the offer to exchange those sixty-nine parking spaces for, I believe, seventy-seven spaces on a parking lot that this company owns, which is adjacent to the city's current employee parking lot that surrounds the Paxton House. And as we considered this, I asked staff to look into that and to try to negotiate the best deal that we could, and I think, I think they've come along with a pretty good idea. But I think the idea's been floated around, and a lot of people have made comments, both for and against, but in essence, I believe the city, looking towards its future term, would be best served by making this transaction. The people with whom I spoke, I think their main concern was that we didn't change the dynamic of the parking in the area, and it doesn't. It, the parking essentially remains the same, but the city obtains a lot that will allow, closer to our campus, essentially just the end of this block across the street, which will allow us to do something as a, as a project in the future, although we don't have certain plans for that right now. But I'll offer that to the commission and make myself available for comments or questions, and Mr. Ridley and his attorney is here if we have any questions for them. Yes, sir.
I have no opposition to Mr. Ridley or to Top Best Ever. I will be voting against this particular item only on the grounds of that we haven't gone through an open bidding process related to the property. I spoke to the mayor prior to tonight's meeting starting, and he tells me that he did not suggest an open bidding process because he's not interested in selling the parking lot in question, and instead was approached with a deal of a land swap and therefore took the deal of the land swap. While I believe that the swapping of the properties has the benefit, or potentially benefits the city in the long term in giving us contiguous property, I also believe that it puts citizens in the long term, not in the next twelve years, because the particular parking lot that we're talking about in question is locked up in a lease for the next twelve years, a lease that also wasn't done through an open bidding process, but instead was done between an individual and the city. Would lock that up for the next twelve years, but then it's, what happens after that? As we're doing, I guess I shouldn't say we, as individuals continue to try to advance downtown redevelopment, some are opposed, some are against. One of the things that is necessary for downtown redevelopment is street-level parking. Some of that parking occurs on the streets, some of it occurs in parking lots. I was a big supporter of the building of the parking garage, but the parking garage solves one part of our parking problem. It does not solve all of our parking problem. So I would be opposed to the elimination of city-owned parking in general in this particular location, but related to this specific municipal order, I am opposed, again, not to Mr. Ridley, not to Top Best Ever, but to the process with which the city is following, which is not giving anybody in the community an open opportunity to bid on and land swap or purchase the deal on their own. Instead, this was a deal that was made and then is now being shared with the public. And I, that is not the kind of open, transparent government that I believe in.
But doesn't Mr. Ridley have a right? Since it is his property, doesn't he have a right to approach anyone that he wants pertaining to his property? He approached the city knowing that we have property right here, and the city is going to have to expand over and above what we have right now for additional building sites or additional parking. I'm confused as to why one couldn't do what he wants to do with his own property.
Mr. Ridley's free to do whatever he wants with his own property. I have no opposition to Mr. Ridley. I think he's making a great business deal that's in his best interest. My role is to make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of Bowling Green, which includes Mr. Ridley, but also includes many other people, including those that come downtown and in the future will continue to come downtown. And while I understand that the current lease agreement locks it up for the next twelve years, downtown Bowling Green's going to continue to grow well beyond the next twelve years. It's difficult for the city to predict what's going to be needed in the next twelve years, and so to be eliminating parking for citizens who would use numerous businesses downtown, where we already have limited parking, seems like a bad idea to me. That doesn't mean that Mr. Ridley has done anything wrong, and I don't, I don't mean in any way to imply that Mr. Ridley has done anything wrong. I think his track record shows what an outstanding businessman he is, and he is making what I think is an outstanding business decision in his best interest. But my interest is for Mr. Ridley and all the citizens of Bowling Green, and I don't believe this is in the citizens' best interest.
My name is Robert Linschel at eleven forty-nine College Street. I agree with Mr. Nash. This needs to be considered in a specific degree. Also, have you considered the old post office for a transition for the city to use that in any way?
Any other comments?
It's my understanding that no current
It's my understanding that no current public parking is being lost in this transaction.
As of today? That's correct. But that's because this commission, prior to my joining, it approved an agreement that locked it up for a total of fifteen years, with a five-year lease and a five-year extension and another five-year extension. So to say that we're losing public parking today would, would be inaccurate because I believe Mr. Ridley did something different than the previous people who rented the property, which is he prohibits parking in those locations after 5:00 PM. So there used to be that during non-peak business hours, people could park there. That's not going on now. Mr. Ridley's shaking his head no, so he's welcome to approach the podium and disagree with me if he'd like. But, uh, but just because we're not losing public parking on, on June 6th of 2017 doesn't mean that the city's not giving up public parking in the future.
Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Nash, Commissioner Nash, just as a point of reference, not to correct you, but I've been on the square almost thirty years, and I've been in the same location twenty-two. The Pushen Building and the prior owners were leasing real estate from that very space. In fact, the mayor has a letter of someone who has leased it for ten years, so when you say we're losing public parking, we are not. For the last twenty-five years, I'm aware that I leased five spaces for my particular office. The BKD, who once again was in the downtown, and now they were transferred to the TIF, that's another whole conversation we could have, they were lured away from the downtown by incentives that were given by the taxpayers. And so now here is an independent person who is trying to use their own personal capital to advance the advancement of downtown Bowling Green. But you're, you're inaccurate about your assumption. That, those spaces that we're talking about were leased for at least twenty-five years, so they have not been available to the public. And once again, the reason I bring up BKD, your point about after 5:00, if you'll recall, they are an accounting firm, and in the peak time of the years, they worked to 12 and 1:00 AM. So this 5:00 concern has not necessarily been accurate. Of the, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll correct the numbers, there are sixty-nine spaces currently leased by me. We're negotiating fifty-eight, and eleven will be given back to the city. So, again, to be accurate, eleven goes back to public parking, which now currently for the next twelve years will not. Next thing is, is of the fifty-eight spaces, historically, we can track back, and I can show you where forty-three of the fifty-eight have been leased in excess of twenty-five years. So once again, to Commissioner Williams, there is almost a net no gain to the public or loss either one, so.
The only thing I can say in, in rebuttal to what, what you said is, I personally parked in those spots after 5:00 PM, never saw a sign, was never told that I was going to be towed, nor never was I towed from any of those spots that you're talking about. Now, I can't say I parked in every single one of them, but as, as a person who frequents downtown on a regular basis.
I respect that.
And so now there is signage that indicates that they are twenty-four-hour monitored spaces, and cars will be towed if they park in them. Accurate?
Yes, I have a, a long-term lease with the city, and that came before this body, was purely betted, and it was totally public and transparent. So nothing about this transaction has not been transparent. It's all been transparent.
Can I ask a question?
Well, the fact, on your part, I, I'm not arguing with you. If you want to engage in an argument, I'll, I'll, I argue with people regularly.
I have no interest in, I have no interest in arguing with you, Mr. Nash. Why would I want to do that? That would be stupid.
What I'm, I'm not in any way suggesting that, that your actions have not been transparent. The fact that the city did not go out to bid on any of the transactions related to the parking is a lack of transparency, in my opinion.
You're right. That is your opinion.
Did you have a comment?
No, I'm, I'm not done. I haven't yielded the floor. I'm, I'm being super respectful, and, and I don't believe that you are, and, and I, I'm being very clear on what I'm saying.
Mr. Nash, I will, I'm going to sit down because I don't think that's an appropriate engagement if you're talking about respect. I respect you. Certainly, I have not shown any disrespect to you.
When you say it, in the way in which you said it is in my opinion, I find that to be disrespectful. Nevertheless, to correct the record, sir.
Thank you very much.
To correct, you can walk away. To correct the record, those spaces were available after 5:00 PM prior to the current lease. So to argue that there is not a loss of public parking prior to that lease is inaccurate. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Yeah, I want to, I want to say thank you for contributing to the, to the increase in downtown and business and track, everything that's going on down there is just wonderful. Do you have an idea of the economic impact that your business is bringing to the downtown area as far as payroll or taxes or?
I'm not privileged to private payroll taxes. That would be something that the treasurer of the city would be able to do, but I do know that the second floor after BKD moved was totally vacant, and Morgan &amp; Morgan moved in there, and then they were lured away to go to the TIF district. So once again, private enterprise trying to compete with incentives that can't be offered by a private enterprise. I was fortunate that Triera Aluminum, one of the largest groups in this area, did come and approach me. They now have made a central office there to bring in their engineers from Louisville and Nashville. I don't know their structure on their payroll, but there's, many of the Japanese people were there last week, and they're Japanese-owned. We will be making an announcement of a very significant addition of another 5,000-square-foot tenant. That will be July the fifteenth. With or without this action, that's going to happen. I think, I'm very proud of that. And I, I don't want to announce that tonight.
How many people work in this building? And, and, you know, when, when you, when you, you know, seal the deal on the July fifteenth, how many people are working there?
Um.
Estimate.
I, I don't know. Seventy-five to a hundred? I mean, again, you have to take the, the clients that are in and out and so forth, but.
And would you assume that seventy-five to a hundred, those employees are shopping and eating and, and partaking in the downtown amenities?
Yes, in the, January, I mean, the July the fifteenth announcement will be, I think, quite exciting. It'll be something that has not happened in downtown Bowling Green in almost sixty years. But we've been blessed that there were many people that wanted to be in that building. We've, my wife and I have put our own capital into it. We've not really come and asked the city for anything, and it's been very difficult to, to, to put money into a facility like that. The exciting thing about downtown, and, and I don't want to preach tonight, but I would like to say, we've got to quit talking about there is no parking downtown. When you send that message out in the public, what are people going to do? They're not going to come. There's lots of parking downtown, but the merchants are parked, their waiters and waitresses and the staffs are parking on the square, and they're taking up the spaces. So when people talk about a problem, the problem is, is the merchants aren't doing what they want, and that's what I'm trying to do. I own a building. I want to park by the building. And this transaction with the city was approached to the city manager, and I said, here it is, and it, it, I think it makes perfectly sense. They're getting, you all are getting in excess of seventy spaces. I'm only getting fifty-eight. You have a continuous place to your other real estate. It makes a great business sense for the city. This is not a bad deal for the city at all.
I'm going to agree with you.
Thank you.
And appreciate what you're doing for downtown.
Thank you.
Ridley, you corrected me on the number of spaces there. There were fifty-eight that you're, you're obtaining from the city's end of it, and you're giving, is it seventy-seven? Is that correct?
No, it's seventy-two. Yeah, I think there's seventy-two in, in the lot. I currently lease sixty-nine. We're giving up eleven back to the city. We're only taking fifty-eight. Net-net, the city's coming out on both sides of this arrangement.
Didn't mean to misstate that. I apologize.
No, no, that's okay. That's all right. Anything else?
No one in the, in the current lot either is being displaced.
Oh, no. No, sir.
The one that we're swapping for.
Right, and once again, many of these spaces, once again, have been leased in excess of twenty-five years. So it's, it's.
I'm going to agree with you. There, I was downtown. I don't know, we went to a show at Skypack. There was a ballgame going on. There was all kinds of stuff going on down in the square, and no, no problem parking.
I may know more about parking in downtown Bowling Green than a lot of folks because I've been conscious of that for the last thirty years. And when Mr. Nash brought up the parking structure was built, on a periodical basis, I go and I count the number of cars, and on any day at noon, when there are restaurants and activities going on, there is two-hundred-and-thirty or less in an eight-hundred square, eight-hundred parking lot garage. Now, you want to talk about something that is not utilized. If the merchants downtown would say, my employees have to park in the free parking in the parking structure, then the merchants, customers, would have lots of parking on the square. So it's a logistics issue. We have to get that support. But there's lots of parking in downtown Bowling Green. Thank you.
Chairman, I just want to make sure, you know, on the disposition of property that the city owns, would you opine on that, please, sir?
Yeah, we expressed the same language in the lease agreement back in 2013, and we put in this municipal order. And I can basically reiterate, the Kentucky Vice Statute requires that surplus city property be transferred with or without compensation to another governmental agency, transferred with or without compensation for economic development purposes, sold at public or electronic auction following publication, or sold, or sold by sealed bids following notice. On both of these, we use the economic development purposes with the idea that by doing both of these, the lease and now this transfer swap, as also expressed a few minutes ago, that this would increase economic development by bringing new jobs into the Pushen Building, by trying to retain the existing jobs in the Pushen Building, and therefore leading to economic development downtown. So we did use the economic development exception to the sealed bidding requirement.
we, we may disagree as to the, the transparency part of it, we follow the statutes as they were, as are written. Is that correct?
Yes, there's an economic development exception to requiring that property be sold by sealed bids or auction.
Trying to think. We, I personally made calls to many of the individuals I knew on the square to advise them of this information, who were both for and against our decision. I mean, it's my opinion that the city as a whole will be better off by adding, or making the swap, adding that property adjacent to our current parking lot. And again, though, though we may disagree on that, what's best for the city, that's the purpose of having five of us to, to kick all that information around. Are there any other comments or questions?
Don't get me started about the parking garage.
Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you very much, sir. Municipal order 2017-101.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated to lease Circus Square Park for concerts in the park.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash, Mr. DeFebbe.
One of our yearly traditions is concerts in the park at Circus Square. We do this through a lease with the DRA. I don't know how many years it's been since we started this, fifteen or so, maybe? I don't know. So we're here tonight.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, sorry. We're here tonight to ask you to approve it again.
Any comments or questions?
I know that the, this particular event always shows up as one of the most popular events to attend by the citizens of Bowling Green and the surrounding counties, and I think it's a great thing that we're able to help continue that.
Lease is a dollar a year, so they'll be able to afford it, so. Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-102.
Municipal order approving the amended and restated agreement related to use of pictometry imagery and software property transfer data with Warren County Property Valuation Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor.
One of the, I think, the best things we do as a city government is provide a pictometry services to our sister governments around as well as to the public. Items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one all have us contracting with a partner to provide a pictometry service that we ourselves contract with the company that does the flyover, and we have a wraparound agreement with Warren County Property Valuation, with BGMU, with, and Warren County, and that enables us to provide some help in paying for this. It might be helpful, I think, and I know you missed Doug, to have him come up and give a brief overview of how pictometry works and why it's important to public safety and to the citizens of Bowling Green. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners. This product was originally purchased six years ago with 911 funding. It allowed us to remain compliant as part of our mapping under the 911 system. To remain compliant as a 911 answering point for the city and the Warren County. We believe it's an excellent product. We saw the value in it. We shared the value with other entities during the last six-year contract that also saw the value in it. They helped us cost-share that. All the revenue that we get from sharing that product goes back into the 911 funding. So we essentially reimburse that, that funding. All of the, the partners that have been using that technology like it. They like to continue to have access to it. And we have the ability, as we move forward, having had, entered into a new six-year contract with pictometry, to, again, make that available to those four partners. Each of them use it for a different purpose. Each of them want different value from the product, and based on that, their pricing under those individual contracts reflects how much or of the product that they want access to.
Public station pictometry is an overhead photograph, but also takes from an oblique, I believe is the right term, angle?
It's an orthographic picture, which is the straight above. It's also an, an oblique, which is angular to all the, the property in Bowling Green and Warren County. That's combined with their proprietary software to be able to use that to literally look at all four sides or from four different positions each property in Warren County. PVA loves that. They use that property, that product to view property, and we can use it tactically. We use it certainly for mapping 911 calls and that sort of thing. So it's a, it's a valuable and useful product for all those entities.
Last four items here are all related to the same, same issue with different agencies. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-103.
Municipal order approving agreement related to use of pictometry imagery between the City of Bowling Green and Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
So moved.
Motion by Denning, second by Williams. Any further discussion on the item? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-104.
Municipal order approving agreement related to use of pictometry imagery between the City of Bowling Green and the City-County Planning Commission of Warren County, Kentucky.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-105.
Municipal order approving agreement related to use of pictometry imagery and software between the City of Bowling Green and Warren County.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning? Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Last item on our agenda. We have time for public comments. If anyone would like to approach the, the thing, Mr.? Sure, come on in.
Good evening, city commissioners, attendees, and supporters. I stand here this afternoon in support of all Bowling Green citizens seeking equal protection in our community. I'm a resident of over sixty years in Bowling Green and a straight retired teacher of thirty-one years in the Warren County system. During all of my teaching experience, I stressed healthy, respectful, inclusive, and During all of my teaching experience, I stressed healthy, respectful, inclusive, and compassionate treatment of each and every student toward themselves, their fellow classmates, and to me, their teacher. The inherent worth and dignity of each of them, particularly those labeled "different", was my guiding principle. Our Bowling Green community is no different. We want all our citizens and community members to be treated with respect, dignity, and value, not denied employment, housing, nor public access to facilities, parks, or restaurants based on religion, gender, race, age, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or sexual identity, or gender identity. Adding sexual orientation and gender identity protections to our anti-discrimination ordinance that has already been enacted and effective is not just desirable, but necessary for our Bowling Green community. Why? Well, for one thing, industry strives to locate in vibrant, healthy, thriving, inclusive, equitable communities where citizens feel safe, valued, supported, and whose rights are protected. To continue to ignore the lack of civil rights protections for a substantial segment of our taxpayers simply is not smart governance, nor responsible business practice. We seek the best environment for our Bowling Green community health, that is, its, its optimal economic growth and employment practices, not disparagement, isolation, or discrimination. Extending legal protections to our LGBTQ community members ensures greater probability innovative commerce will locate here. It's just, sound business practice. My students were quick to grasp the wisdom of treating each other as they wanted to be treated by others. It is time for our commission to proudly embrace that wisdom and extend its protections to our LGBT community members who have been struggling for over twenty years now to gain equal discrimination protections. The golden rule should thrive in Bowling Green, not just hollow, not just be hollow words from empty hearts. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of our LGBT community rights to protections and inclusion in our beloved Bowling Green. The ball of action for justice is in your court, literally.
Ma'am, your time, time has expired, thank you.
Will you, ma'am? Will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Claudia Haynes, and I live at 1314 Cardinal Way, Bowling Green, Kentucky. Thank you.
Once again, this is Robert Lyonschild at 1149 College Street. This is concerning transportation issues. You had mentioned one about the BG, BG transportation. I wanted you to continue on with your minutes so that business can be done for the day. I have been helping out an individual who has been homeless, and I have given out bus tickets to that individual, but this individual has been having problems getting to their location of work at other job locations within the city, of job parks within the city, and I was hoping that you could continue on with the project of money with the BG transportation issue, and to continue on that issue with having that transportation being transported to the other parks that have not been in that area for the buses, so that individual people who are looking for jobs, who may be homeless or in a shelter, can do so, and I would appreciate any comments about that. And I also have some other questions as well.
I'll talk to you specifically about that later if you have, if you have a moment.
The other question I have is concerning Morgantown Road and the sidewalk that has already been completed. I did hear in one of the minutes readings on, I was listening to on TV, that, that once that project had been done, that you would have increased the speed limit in that area on Old Morgantown Road, and it's only, it still hasn't been done yet, it's only set at twenty-five miles an hour, I just want to know if that would be increased to at least thirty miles an hour.
I don't remember that discussion.
I, I remember it quite well.
If you can point that out to me, I'll check that down, because I'm about to be standing at twenty-five.
It may have been a year ago or so, when you were discussing the issue of the sidewalk on Old Morgantown Road. Also, the other issue that I have is the interstate connection from Russville Road, which is Natural Parkway all the way over to Morgantown Road. There's a sign limit of fifty-five miles an hour, it used to be sixty-five. Will that continue? Is there construction over there that I was unaware of?
That's a state highway, and we don't have any control over it, but my knowledge is that they're just getting ready to pave that portion of the road, and they're trying to slow people down.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Hello?
My name is Tom Morris. I live at 1019 Lois Lane, Bowling Green, 42104. With the recent decision of the Trump administration to withdraw the US from the Paris Climate Agreement, municipal governments around the country are taking the lead in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, conserving energy, and preserving and improving the environment. Such actions are not new to Bowling Green, and I applaud the city for its long-term goals, which are spelled out in this strategic plan, to have a sustainable city government and enhanced public transportation, and the near-term priorities, including stormwater mitigation, improved community walkability, and parks development. And the residents of Bowling Green certainly appreciate the efforts to improve the quality of life. One great example is the Greenways Project, and this is improving the way our city residents can live and enjoy health and safety. However, many people in Bowling Green also want to know that we are being good citizens of the world by reducing our consumption of carbon-based fuels. I'm certain I'm not alone in this sentiment. As Chair of the State Chapter of the Sierra Club, I meet with many people, both within that organization and outside, who have spoken with me about their concerns about the environment, tackling the issues of climate change and building sustainable communities. Researchers at Yale University indicate that the majority of Americans support participation in the Paris Agreement. Even here, in coal-friendly Kentucky, some fifty-six percent of the population said the US should participate in the agreement. In the few days since the announcement of the withdrawal from the Paris Agreement, more than twelve-hundred business leaders, mayors, governors, and college presidents have announced their commitment to the goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. That number includes two-hundred-and-eleven climate mayors who have vowed to work towards the Paris targets. These government and industry leaders share the values that Bowling Green's strategic and comprehensive plans reflect. We all seek to improve the quality of life for our entire community, and we can do so by ensuring that our air and water are clean and safe. In doing so, we can also help people achieve better health, reduce healthcare costs, and improve productivity. And we can do this in ways that pay for themselves.
Sorry, Mr. Morris, your time has expired.
Okay, I urge the mayor to support this effort to commit to follow the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name, please.
My name is Ron Whitmore. I actually live in Albaton, 281 Neely Road. I'm sorry, I'm not a citizen or a person that lives here in the city, but, but I represent the group, many environmental group with Sierra Club, Mr. Morris, and others. I would like to make a proposal to the commission and the mayor to follow a large group of mayors throughout the United States, from Alaska to Atlanta, Atlanta being the last one that's joining a consortium of mayors that are forming a, are committing to long-term commitments to renewable energy. Now, this program is, has economic advantages for the city also, because renewable energy industry is rapidly growing, and industry with double-digit figures every year. I have some documents here for you all to look over. This kind of summarizes the growth in the renewable industry, and potentials for Bowling Green are enormous. A recent bulletin from the renewable energy industry, TBA is going to invest eight billion dollars to, for its renewable energy portfolio. I have a short summary of why Atlanta went with the renewable energy commitment. I have a copy of the resolution for you all to look over from the Atlanta. I have a document for a mayor to sign and endorse, if you, if you all feel it's feasible, and can get more information and join that group. So I have, hope you all consider this, and if you feel it's feasible, will participate in the mayor's agreement for a substantial, long-term, long-term commitment to renewable energy sources for this city. I have these three copies of these documents here to submit. And it won't cost anything, so you don't have to add it to your budget. So, so thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you for your attendance here tonight. I'm sorry, did you have something else?
Stephanie Morris, 1019 Lois Lane. I'd like to finish the paragraph that my husband couldn't finish. I'm a member of the Sierra Club, and I'm just reiterating what Tom Morris said and what Ron Whitmore said. I would like to urge Mayor Wilkerson, with the support of the Commissioners, to join the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda in committing to help meet America's Emissions Pledge under the Paris Agreement. I encourage you all to work with the US Conference of Mayors, especially the mayor, to work with the US Conference of Mayors and the grassroots efforts that are springing up around the country to reduce our consumption of carbon-based fuels and to move to clean forms of energy such as solar, wind, and hydropower. Those are the future. Those are the future. Please join the mayors of Louisville, Nashville, Knoxville, and over six hundred other cities in the global covenant of mayors for climate and energy. Help us ensure a bright future for Bowling Green, for our country, and for our planet. Thank you.
Everyone, I'm Grayson Hunt. I live on Tenth Avenue here in downtown Bowling Green. Hi, everybody. I'm just back here, I had surgery two weeks ago. This is my first major outing in public, so hello. Nice to see you all, never had surgery before. I went to a doctor here in Bowling Green and had a great first meeting, but he wouldn't, he wouldn't apply my surgery to my insurance. It had to be coded in a way that recognized my status as a transgender person, and he wasn't willing to do that. That's his right, that's fine, but it meant that I did go to Vanderbilt Hospital, where I got excellent care, and my surgery was planned within two weeks of my first consultation. The surgery is tens of thousands of dollars. I fundraised for it with a lot of people here in this community, in this room here, helped me pay for it, but that money all went to Tennessee, it all went to Vanderbilt. So when we think about what it means to appreciate and support people in this community, it is a business decision, and that surgeon in Bowling Green made a business decision. And I hope you'll notice that, you know, people like me are being supported just south of the border. It's easy for me to go there. I could live there if I wanted to, but I'm still here, I'm still talking to you, but I want to keep you updated, that when I tried to get this coded in a way that would get it covered for surgery, it wasn't available to me in this city, so I went elsewhere. That's easy for me to do. Thank you very much.
Is that it? Anyone else? All right, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. We'll be in about a five-minute recess, and then go into a closed session. If I could, ask you all to clear the chambers, thank you.